Good evening. It's 6:00. And welcome to the July 15th meeting of the governing body. Call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilmember Duncan, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a last-minute fill-in for Councilman Miller, who was unable to be here this evening. So with that, I will do the invocation this evening. We come together as leaders entrusted with the well-being of our community, a community that looks to us for guidance, solutions, and a vision of a better future. In this chamber and in our daily endeavors, let us choose to lead with hope, not negativity. Let hope be the compass that guides our decisions and the wellspring from which we draw our strength to light a path forward. May we approach every challenge not with cynicism, but with a belief in our collective ability to overcome. May we see obstacles not as roadblocks, but as opportunities for innovation and growth. May we speak with words that build up rather than tear down, with encouragement rather than criticism. Let us foster an atmosphere of collaboration and mutual respect, recognizing that our diverse perspectives, when united by a common purpose, can achieve extraordinary things. Let us remember the profound impact our actions and attitudes have on the lives of those we serve. And may we be inspired to work tirelessly for the good of all, to champion progress, and to cultivate a city where every individual feels valued, supported, and optimistic about the future. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As far as I know, we are... First item, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akla.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Kell.
Here.
Miller.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
All right. Okay, we have 10 present... or, excuse me, nine present with one Councilmember Miller absent.
Okay. When you're ready, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
All right. A and B are resolutions introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting Dean Patel and Wanta Gold an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code, Section 945-150 at Seek, concerning noise provisions. C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of May 31 to June 27, 2025, and enumerating said expenditures therein. D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, removing certain real property from the dynamic core redevelopment district. E is approval of a professional engineering contract between the City of Topeka and Finney and Turner Seed Transportation and Civil Engineering LLC for the 2025 biannual bridge inspection process, including inventory and appraisal of urban secondary and off-system bridges. F is approval of professional engineering contract between the City of Topeka and SBB Engineering LLC for the design and construction documents related to the roadway improvement project for the Shadywood West Neighborhood CIP Project 841098 Phase 5. G are minutes of the regular meeting of July 8, 2025, and there are no applications.
Okay. The consent agenda is read. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor and second by Councilman Duncan will do the roll call vote.
Yep. It's ready to go. Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Mr. Martin.
Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the agenda action items. Madam Clerk.
A is a public hearing to consider the establishment of the 30th and Topeka Boulevard Tax Increment Finance, TIF, redevelopment district for property located at 2950 Southwest Topeka Boulevard, Topeka, Kansas, and an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez establishing a TIF district within the city located at 30th and Topeka Boulevard pursuant to KSA 12-1770 at Seek.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Rannan Freeman and Planning and Development Director will lead us through this item.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, governing body. So tonight, as described, we have in front of you an ordinance for the creation of a TIF district. So I've got a quick presentation I'm going to run through here to give you some background details. So the applicant is Batiste Development. So the project name is BDC 30th and Topeka Boulevard. So to provide an overview, the project contemplates a 2.66 acre site at the northeast corner of 30th and Topeka Boulevard. The redevelopment that's being proposed includes the construction of one developer-owned quick-service restaurant and then up to two commercial buildings that will be owned and operated by a third party. So this provides a little more detail on the location. The yellow boundary outlines the district that's being proposed for the TIF. And then really what we're talking about tonight is whether the TIF meets the state statute and guidelines qualifying as an eligible area underneath KSA 12-1770. So one of those qualifying factors is that the building is at least 65 years of age or older, and the existing structure in the proposed district was constructed in 1960, making it an eligible qualifying area underneath that. So talking a little bit more about next steps. So there'll be a public hearing that'll be held on August 12th that we... that staff has set and placed, and that is to review the TIF project plan as well as the development agreement. And then at that point in time, we'll also go through the financial analysis prepared by Columbia Capital and speaking to the BUT4 test, including the city's findings from that. All right. And then as far as the creation of the TIF, staff sees that this meets the state statute guidelines and supports the creation of the district. Be happy to stand for any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the body? Councilman Duncan.
Does this TIF district touch any of the other TIF district we created above, or is there a... it doesn't matter, I'm just curious, or is there a gap then that exists, or does this kind of complete the...
That's a great question. I know that it's not within the other one, but I do know that it's probably getting close to being... I don't believe it's contiguous with the rest of it, but I would have to check.
But it's getting...
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. With this item on the agenda, it requires a reading with regards to the public hearing procedure. And at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. Sir, step forward.
Mayor, council members, thank you for having me here tonight. Bob Johnson with Paulsonelli Law Firm. On behalf of the developer, Batiste Development Company, three members of the executive team of Batiste are here tonight. Mark Wittenberg, the president, Matt Werner, the vice president, and Matt McNary, the CFO. They are Topeka-based. They have done Topeka projects. They've also done projects across 15 states. They work with approximately 10 national credit tenant-type quick-service restaurants, retail, Walgreens, Starbucks, those type of tenants that would be the targets for this development. Three pad sites, as Rhanna said. She did an excellent job of describing the project, just to give a little bit more information about it. It is at the northeast corner of Southwest Topeka Boulevard and 30th. It's the Meadow Acres Inn. If you are familiar with the site, it sits down quite a bit in grade from the Topeka Boulevard Street right away. There is quite a bit of site work that needs to go into the project to put it to grade, quite a bit of additional redevelopment work that is necessary in any site of this age to turn it into a higher and better use, which is what we're doing here. It's not, you know, from a macro level, you know, a lot of moving parts, but it is when you get into the guts of it. There's... it's just challenges that come with redevelopment. And these projects come with cost prohibitive hills to climb, if you will, which is what incentives are made for. And we've, we believe, put together a package here and a proposal to the city that we've been working through with professional staff very constructively that will be in front of you with specifics and the numbers and the allocation of those costs to statutorily eligible categories on the August 12th public hearing. All we're doing tonight is taking that next statutory procedural step in the process that's necessary to keep the process moving, setting the geographic boundaries of the district. No incentive allocation is being given tonight. It is that statutory step. And until that public hearing is held on August 12th, the development agreement is in front of you with the developers' obligations, the rights and obligations of the parties, which you'll have and see and consider in package and in tandem with the TIF project plan and the CID district decision you'll make that night. It'll all come at that same night to make a final decision on the project. We hope you have your support then, but now, we hope you have your support to move forward in this statutory procedural step to keep working on the project and keep working on a final product here with staff. So items 3A and 3B, we ask for your support and would stand for any questions if you have any, for me or for Batiste.
Okay. Thank you, sir. From the governing body, any questions? Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, sir. Is this a pay-as-you-go TIF?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I'll ask again if there's anyone else who would like to speak to this matter. Anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Okay. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. So the body has heard this. I want to ask legal, do we move forward on action item A and B simultaneously or separately? Separately? Okay. So is there a motion on action item 3A from the governing body? I have a motion to approve by Councilman Dobler and a second by Deputy Mayor Kell. We're ready to vote.
Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
We have nine yes, with one abstention, it looks like. Oh, absent, sorry. So we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay. Motion's carrying. We'll move on then to action item 3B. Madam Clerk.
B is a public hearing to consider the advisability of establishing a community improvement district CID at 30th and Topeka Boulevard pursuant to KSA 12-6A26 at Seek.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Rannan Freeman and our Director of Plan and Development will lead us through this item as well.
Thank you. Yes, so as the development team just described, staff has been working closely with Batiste and their consultants to work through this project. We still are working on some final finishes that need to be done to the development agreement, hoping to finish that up this week. But with that being said, we have a public hearing that's set to review the TIF project plan and the development agreement on August 12th. So it would be, I think, in our best interest if we waited... I mean, we set the public hearing, so that's why we're here, but if we evaluate the CID, the TIF, project plan, and the development agreement as a whole altogether as one package, so you have the holistic view of what's being requested. And so that would occur on August 12th.
Okay. Questions for Rhanna? Seeing none, we'll go through the same procedure. I open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Just want to make sure if we'll move on again if the body has any discussion or comments. Okay. We'll move on to action item C. Madam Clerk. Thank you, Rhanna.
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at the northeast intersection of southeast 21st Street and southeast Adams Street from M1-2 family dwelling district and M2 multiple-family dwelling district to C2 commercial district.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Dan Warner, Planning Division Director will lead us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, it's good to see everybody again. So this first item is a rezoning at 21st and Adams. The proposal is to rezone from M1-2 family and M2 multi-family all to C2 in order to accommodate a convenience store and a gas station. Commercial zoning is required for those uses. Subject property has been vacant for a number of years. The proposed use is consistent with the mixed-use nature of that intersection. You've got multi-family and commercial on the other three corners. The applicant held a neighborhood information meeting, well-attended. Planning Commission considered the item and recommended approval at their June meeting. Staff recommends approval as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions for Director Warner? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in my district. Dan, I've had some emails. Is this going to bring the houses... if we rezone this, will this bring their property value down?
I will try to answer that as generally as possible. My understanding is residential property and commercial property aren't appraised at the same way. So residential property, they appraise it based on other residential properties around it. So I... it's probably a better question for the county appraiser, but I would say likely no.
Okay. You just said in your comment that this property has been vacant for several years?
Correct.
That's not correct.
Oh.
There was a house that was tore down last year.
Thank you.
And there was a resident... there was also an office building that I think is still there. This is a very blighted area in that area. I have talked to Abraham, to my colleagues. I have talked to him, and he assured me that... because I was really questioning and concerned about the traffic in and out of the property, and he explained that to me, and I also read my notes there. Because I know that's a busy, busy intersection. There's tons of accidents there, and we were very, very concerned about that. One neighbor was concerned about the lighting, if it was going to be bright enough, that it was going to be shining on her house or whatever.
So through the site planning process, as I get forward with developing the property, there are standards for site lighting for commercial properties, and it's... we have a standard that it can't bleed a certain amount off the property past their property line. So it should be contained on the property, the lighting.
Okay. So it won't be real, real bright or anything like that?
Shouldn't be.
Okay. If this is approved, I will tell my colleagues, as long as I'm sitting in this seat, I will make sure that it is up to standards and we are following everything that is supposed to be followed, because there's residents that are concerned of the traffic that's going to linger there. And the developer assured me that he was going to keep it safe and clean and that we would not have that. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
On this particular item, it requires a revelation of export... okay. Let me finish. Requires an ex parte communications of any of them that have taken place. So I'm going to read this, and then Councilman and Deputy Mayor, you can have the floor. So prior to proceeding with the vote, each member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that that communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in the communication, they were able to fairly objectively and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the Planning Commission minutes, the staff report and its attachments, the public comments made during the Planning Commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. So I'm asking the body members, I've heard Councilwoman Ortiz, if there is any other ex parte communications to bring forward. Councilman Banks?
Mayor, I've had communication with some of the people involved in this project, but I think that I can make a fair and impartial decision.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor.
I've had a few emails. I feel like I can make an impartial decision.
Okay. Councilman Duncan.
Same here, a few emails, and then when I was at a few community events, some people asked about it.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Hiller?
Similar. We've got joint emails, and I've had a couple of conversations with people. It's good. I can make an impartial decision.
Okay. Thank you. So I want to acknowledge Deputy Mayor.
Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Valdivia Akla?
Same, and I can make an impartial decision.
Okay. Thank you. I couldn't see you on the screen. Deputy Mayor, are you still?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think this is a benefit for that area. It's one of those things that kind of go in any direction. You have to go a far distance to get somewhere, and this gives those people an opportunity that may not have a vehicle but need to mow their grass, an opportunity not to walk a mile to a gas station. Gets them an opportunity to maybe they'll get food and essentials in an emergency quickly if they don't have that vehicle and not have to walk that mile to Dylan's or to Sixton Adams or somewhere like that. So I think this is what's really needed. I understand we need more grocery stores around town, but this is kind of one of those areas that's not got a lot of commercial around it at all, so this kind of gives it an option for the residents around that area.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we've communicated our ex parte communications. We've had discussion. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Banks. And a second by the Deputy Mayor. Okay. Call the roll call, please. Vote.
All right. You can vote. Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
I thought we were going to do a roll call, but we can take it. Okay.
Councilmember Hofer? There we go. Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, action item B.
All right. D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on a 16-acre property located near the southeast intersection of Northwest Lyman Road and Northwest Vale Avenue from R1 single-family dwelling district all to M1-2 family dwelling district.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Dan Warner, Planning Division Director will lead us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, so the second item is, as stated already, a rezoning change from R1 single-family to M1-2 family. The proposed use is duplexes, and that requires a rezoning. There will be 40 duplexes on this property with 80 total units. The property has been undeveloped farmland for some time, but was subdivided in 1995 for a single-family residential subdivision. The applicant held a neighborhood information meeting. Planning Commission considered the item at their June meeting and recommended approval. Staff recommends approval as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Warner? Okay. Seeing none, this too requires me to ask for ex parte communications. So I have to ask... I'm sorry.
Just when you're finished, sorry.
Okay.
No, it's out here.
Prior to proceeding with this vote, each member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that the communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in the communication, they were able to fairly objectively and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the Planning Commission minutes, the staff report and its attachments, the public comments made during the Planning Commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. So I ask now any governing body members who wish to move forward. Councilwoman Valdivia Akla?
Thank you. I have received phone calls and a couple of emails. I am able to render an impartial decision. I do want to put forth after everyone is done with their saying whatever they're going to say, a move to approve. Thank you.
Okay. Any other communications? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I received some emails as well, and I can make a fair decision.
Deputy Mayor?
Same.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to give the voting options, and then Councilwoman Valdivia Akla, you can make your motion. We have the option of approve the Planning Commission's recommendation, reject or amend the Planning Commission's recommendation, or remand back to the Planning Commission. Votes are required by the governing body to move this forward. Councilwoman Valdivia Akla?
Thank you, Mayor. I will do option one with the approval as the Planning Commission has recommended.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve by Councilwoman Valdivia Akla, second by Councilwoman Ortiz. We're ready to vote.
Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk, when you're ready, action item E.
E is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, amending City of Topeka's policy for the reinvestment housing incentive districts to add capitalization rate criteria and rescinding Resolution Number 9627.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Braxton Kopley, Deputy City Manager will walk us through this item.
Thank you, governing body. Basically, there are two amendments that we're making to this, and this was discussed at the Policy and Finance Committee meeting, and they did recommend approval. The first is simply to update the number of units that we need to do annually, as well as the amount that we need to do to catch up with past due demand. Those are reflected in lines 18 through 20, as well as lines 62 through 67. Simply just updating the initial... when this resolution was initially done, we did a five-year tranche. And so, given the fact that this is a living document, we have simply updated those numbers based on what was in the housing study. The second is the more substantive amendment to that, and this occurs in beginning on line 262 of your resolution. And basically, just really briefly, because not everyone talks about cap rates on a daily basis, I just kind of want to give a real basic understanding of it. So we use a cap rate or capitalization rate to estimate the potential income from a property. And basically, it is the net operating income divided by the market value, and that gives you a percentage amount. Johnson County Appraiser has published cap rates depending on the class of the property in terms of what an investor would realistically expect. For example, on a multifamily housing deal in... And basically, it is the net operating income divided by the market value, and that gives you a percentage amount. Johnson County Appraiser has published cap rates depending on the class of the property in terms of what an investor would realistically expect. For example, on a multifamily housing deal in this market, you're looking at about a 6.5% cap rate. On a residential, single-family deal, an investor would look for a cap rate in the 7.5%. If, God forbid, you were to buy a hotel, particularly a full-service one next to a convention center, if you're an investor, you're looking for a cap rate in the 10.5% range, because that is a risky real estate investment. So when we took a look at the Union Tower, one of the things that we looked at on that was there were a number of unique factors about that particular property that we took into consideration, and we actually made a recommendation to increase the cap rate or increase the potential rate of return to the developer. Instead of 6.5%, I think that we came back at eight, somewhere north of eight, and ultimately where the council ended up landing approving that, with the requested benefit that they had, cap rate is north of 10%, right? And so what we wanted to do was to reflect some objective factors in our RHID policy in terms of the things that we as staff looked at on Union Tower, and that also that we think are compelling reasons that would allow for a greater cap rate. And just to summarize those really quickly, one would be to prioritize downtown redevelopment. Another would be to provide workforce housing. Workforce housing is 61 to 120% of AMI. Affordable housing, that would be basically AMI or area median income of less than 60%. If it is a historically undeveloped area, if it is land that has sat vacant for a period of time, i.e. those empty lots next to the old water tower. If it's a blighted area, meets the definition of blight under KSA 121778. And then also if the owner is willing to put restrictive covenants on the property, whether that is to put additional restrictions on relative to affordability or to restrict the transfer of the property, those would all be factors. And these were truly factors that we took into consideration in terms of making that cap rate recommendation of 8% when market rate apartments are in the 6.5%. With that, I will ask that you approve this, and we'll gladly stand for any questions.
Questions, Mary? Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Braxton and staff, I appreciate you bringing this in front of us. I know we talked about it during the process of that project, and it really makes a lot of sense. I mean, we're not talking about an incentive from the city coffers. This is an increment on taxes that wouldn't be there unless there was an investment, and it just, it makes all kinds of sense for those areas of the community that we desperately need to redevelop. So I'll be in support of this. Thank you. In fact, I may make a motion there.
There's a motion to approve by Councilman Dobler. Do I have second by Councilman Duncan? If we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Valdiviakala? We have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay, Madam Clerk, action item F.
F is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers David Banks, Sylvia Ortiz, and Neil Dobler, amending the 2025 to 2027 CIB and the 2025 to 2034 CIP to provide additional funding for Project Number 701039 for street improvements to southeast 29th Street from Kansas Avenue to Adams Street.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Steve Groan, our Public Works Director, will lead us through this item.
Good evening, Mayor. Governing Body. We came to a PI committee today. This is one of these two-part actions. Our first item is to amend the 2025 to 2034 Capital Improvement Project and the 2025 to 2027 Capital Improvement Budget for additional funding for a 29th Street project between Kansas Avenue and Adams Street. The issue that came up was during the project design, we were using old numbers for what the railroad costs would be for inspection and flagging. Now that we have our permits from Burlington Northern to Santa Fe, their rates, daily rates are, as of this morning, were $1,400 a day plus $400 mobilization. And then they got back to us at 4:30 today to let us know that they're raising the rates to $1,500 a day. So we're looking to increase the budget for our project by $300,000 because of this. The first step would be to do the amendment, and then if you approve the amendment, we would look to increase the budget for the project. This project is ready to go out for bids. It's gone through all the processes. It's sitting with contracts and procurements. If the governing body votes to increase this budget, our plan is to get that out for bids as soon as tomorrow. If we are unsuccessful and have to wait until August to come before the governing body, they're talking tariffs kicking into effect August 1st, and that could have impact on the project budget also. So we'd appreciate your consideration tonight to approve this budget request.
Councilwoman Valdiviakala?
I just have a question, and this is me having, you know, not the knowledge, because I didn't attend the Public Works and Infrastructure meeting, but looking at F and looking at G, looking at the total project budget, the first one says four million, a little bit over four million, then G has a little bit over eight million. So am I right in looking at this project which goes from southeast 29th, Kansas Avenue, to Adams? So that section right there with both of these, is this correct? It's going to be over $12 million?
No, ma'am, it would be the $8 million. The one project number that we are increasing, project number 701039-00, is one of several project numbers related to that project. The total project budget would be the $8 million. That includes a lot of utility work and other issues. We're only looking to increase the budget for one project number of the, I believe, five of the projects.
Okay. And can I just ask that? That makes me feel better. So can I ask what bridge repair specifically is going to be done without going into the weeds, just generic?
We're replacing the reinforced concrete box that Butcher Creek flows through, the bridge under the Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Railroad Bridge. It's where 29th Street makes a slight curve to get around the pier so the railroad bridge. There's a large box culled underneath there that needs to be replaced, and also the water main underneath that box culled.
Okay. And one more question. Is that curvature that kind of happens there under that bridge, is that going to straighten down?
No, ma'am. That will stay. The guardrail fencing and everything will be updated, but we need to carry that through to avoid the skew of the railroad.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Ready to question? Motion from the body. Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor and second by Councilman Banks. We're ready to vote.
Yes.
Okay, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Madam Clerk, action item G.
G is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of Project Number 701039 for street improvements on southeast 29th Street from Kansas Avenue to Adams Street.
Okay. Come back to you, Steve.
If this is part two of what we just talked about, this is actually to improve the one project number 701039's budget to take into consideration the increased cost mainly for the railroad flagging.
Okay. Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Duncan. We're ready to vote.
Councilmember Valdiviakala?
Yes.
Okay, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Thank you for your consideration tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Dirk. Okay, next, action item 3H. We have two people signed up to speak on this particular item. City Manager?
Read it into the...
I just want to, Madam Clerk, and then City Manager, then I'll have them come forward.
Okay. An ordinance introduced by City Manager Robert Perez, levying special assessments on certain property to pay the acquisition cost of certain improvements in the City of Topeka, Kansas, including costs authorized by KSA 10-116A, is heretofore authorized by ordinance number 20556, and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor. Members of the governing body, Braxton Kopley, our Deputy City Manager, will lead us through this item.
Braxton?
Would you like me to give an introduction, or would you like to have the public comment?
Well, if they have enough information to comment on, go ahead and let them do it, but your information may give them more information.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Basically, what this ordinance is doing is it is going to allow us to issue special assessments to pay off the existing future specials on the 16 lots that the developer owns, plus the three lots that the city purchased at auction. And the net result of this is currently those special assessments on these lots is in the neighborhood of $300 a month. That is honestly high. Similarly situated properties in Lawrence Bay as well as in Rock Fire have specials closer to $150 a month. So by taking these existing future specials and putting them into the CID and then amortizing them over 20 years is going to allow those specials to go from about $300 a month down to about $185 a month. So when houses are built and people purchase those, they know that they're going to be responsible for specials in the range of $185 a month. I do have Kevin Cowan, who is our bond counsel from Gilmore and Bell, who prepared the documents here. We are doing this on a consent. All of the property owners have consented, which has allowed us to just move right to this process without having to go through and do a number of statutory steps in terms of a public hearing. So I'll defer to Kevin if I missed anything. He's participating via Zoom. Otherwise, stand for any questions that you have.
No questions? I'll ask for the first person who signed up for public comment on this is Danielle Twamlow.
I appreciate the opportunity. Not probably going to say absolutely anything new that we haven't heard multiple times before, but again, I think it's just important that we say the things out loud so that everybody hears. Considering this ordinance was already passed back in September, kind of assuring that these would be developed already, so I do appreciate the questions that I had submitted last week in public comment about the accompanying RHID that goes with this were answered and reiterated exactly what I was assuming and thinking, but also gave a little bit more information for us. But I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding the CID with how it is going to be saving the future homeowners money, when on the public website where it shows everybody's property values and property taxes, it actually lists out specifically special taxes in the amount of specials, and even says what percentage of each of these amounts are going to, whether it be sewer, or for the dam, or whatever else on the website. And of the 16 properties that are listed as part of this ordinance, none of them are paying $300 a month. Those higher property tax specials that we're seeing are those other hundred and whatever that are left that this is supposed to be the template for. Those are the ones that are spending a little bit higher, not the 16. As a matter of fact, one of the properties is paying $97 a month in special property taxes, unless our websites are completely inaccurate and are absolutely not able to be read properly, even though it has it all broken down. That's exactly what it's stating. So I'm confused on how these 16 properties are going to be benefiting and how that makes sense from that, because we know in the end that this is just deferring payment that, you know, taxpayers, the school districts, and all those things. I also do want to point out that, again, ordinance number 19955 back in June of 2015, that the general nature of improvement under that ordinance stated that we would be providing water service to the following described area with piping, fire hydrants, engineering, and all other contingencies required for a complete project for infrastructure. These include the blocks and lots within the 16, Lot 2, 3, 1 under A, 11, 12, 13, 14, 20, 21 under Block B, 1, 2, 3, and 5 under Block C, that already has the infrastructure in place, because if you look on the map, these are 16 properties that are surrounded by other homes already predominantly. They're already developed and have these things in place. So recouping the cost for all this infrastructure development and having all of this requirement at the taxpayers' cost is irresponsible. I really encourage us to look quite a bit further. I can see that we've already passed an RHID ordinance that has really good things in it. I'm really thankful that we listened to some ways to strengthen it. However, including downtown, where this same property owner owns six to eight properties that are going to qualify for this extra RHID money that is laid vacant for 10-plus years is not ironic. And so it's becoming pretty obvious as to what is going on, and we are actually going to be paying for it in the long run with probably another failed project here. So I'm just not sure that this is the right developer to be funding all this money to, and I urge you to relook.
Thank you. Second is Councilwoman Valdiviakala?
Here we... Okay. I'm just going to say, as I've been consistent with everything concerning Lawrence Bay and Clausman, I'm not going to support any of this. I never will support it until he pays what he owes to the taxpayers, until he accepts responsibility, just like much, you know, just like a lot of poorer people and middle-class people have to accept their responsibilities, but somehow because he is who he is, and this is my opinion, and my opinion that I also have found out that many constituents have, that because he is who he is, because he influences things that happen in Topeka, because he can get away with what he gets away with, because he's probably a multimillionaire and has a lot of deals running in this city, because he can leave these properties dead space in downtown, it's just like the same old thing. Nothing seems to change here. The movers, the shakers, in my opinion, and those of many that I represent, are always going to get off on something, while the rest of us are going to be nickelled and dying to death. So never will I support anything of this nature, because it comes down to the same thing, that things do not seem to change. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Malchala, I was going to allow the second person who had signed up for public comment to speak before I ask the governing body, so I'll move back to public comment.
Sorry.
Mr. McClure?
Henry McClure, Topeka, Kansas. Thank you, Your Honor. I think more and more people are, kind of have the sentiment of our friend Ms. Akla. It's just becoming apparent. Here's the thing about it, he's probably worth a billion dollars, or more, whatever. What does it matter? We don't need to count his money. And it's not his fault today that he didn't pay. Yeah, he could have paid, should have paid, but nobody foreclosed on him. The county didn't do it, we've made it very clear that the city can do it, the city can foreclose on the specials. I'd make this deal today because it's the only deal. It's exactly like the hotel. So you play it to where it's just like the last guy standing. But he's not going to get mad if he doesn't have to build houses there. I don't know what you guys...you guys shouldn't be afraid of him. This is like a little nap to him. What concerns me today is Section 3A. It says it's backed by the full faith and credit of the city. That's like Lucy holding that football, and you guys are Charlie Brown. You can't back this with the full faith and credit of the city. Look at his track record. But here's the thing about it, he said all along, from day one, he was never going to develop that. He said that to everybody. He also said to Earl McIntosh and I that he would have a proposal on the rest of the lots. So approve this, go down the road, but make it subject to foreclosure on the rest of the lots. Because if nobody else has the opportunity to be the developer, the system's rigged. It is so rigged, and everybody's catching on to it. It's not, ah, boy, that Henry's unstable, you know? You can keep saying things about Henry. But you know what, that ship, you know, that sail, baby, it ain't flying anymore. But you got to stand up and do the right thing. And Jim won't care. Foreclose on him for the specials, give him the chance to do this. Boy, look at all that extra time. I feel like I'm in a limo with all this time on the books. But I thought this was pay-as-you-go, backed by the developer. So if Section 3A is a scribner's error, but if you guys back the deal with a full faith and credit after ten years of not collecting taxes, that's 3,650 days, that will be a shame. This has gone on too long. This is why I don't support the land bank in Topeka. Because this is the land bank. And the banker is not collecting the debt. The banker, the land ba...it's virtually a land bank today, and you're not collecting the debt. And this is shameful. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Okay, we've had public comment. As the governing body, if there's any discussion that they'd like to continue with on this item, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Braxton, or whoever, if he fails to pay, this gets converted or reverted back to the city, is that correct? Or back to the land bank, is that right?
State law, when you say failed to pay, are we talking about failure to pay the real property taxes? Then state law would dictate and would control the procedure, which would be that the county would have the ability to foreclose on the properties if he fails to pay the taxes.
I thought this particular deal, it would go back to the land bank on the seventeen properties if he failed.
So that there would be, if he fails to follow the terms of the agreement that was negotiated between him, and we can't get a deal done, then those properties would go to the land bank. What's in front of you tonight is simply the CID, which is going to allow, it's the vehicle by which those future specials are going to be amortized over twenty years. Later this year, when we issue bonds, we will be issuing the bonds to pay those existing bonds off. And then the people that own these lots will be responsible for paying those special assessments, which will pay off those bonds.
And did you say that the neighbors, they're in agreeance with this? Are the property owners around it?
The city and the Lawrence Bay Development are the property owners that are subject to this, those sixteen lots plus our three lots. We have agreed to move forward on this, agreed to the amount that's going to be assessed, which allowed us to skip some statutory steps, otherwise we would have had to have gone through public hearings, right? Because it's them and us that are in this together, right? This is very limited in scope.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to recap.
Deputy Mayor?
I was under the same assumption as the councilwoman, that this, you know, with our agreement, that if things fall apart, that the property will revert back to us. Now, from what was said earlier on the specials, those sixteen being so much lower than others, is that because those specials are caught up compared to those other properties? Wasn't that part of the agreement, that the specials had to be caught up? So would that lower the cost compared to the rest of them?
The overarching deal included a payment of approximately $530,000 for past due specials, as well as a portion of that is going towards the future specials, to get them to the point where, once this CID is issued, that will get the monthly payment in that $185 a month range.
So did that reflect on, like, when it was brought up on the tax rules? Right now, where, since they're caught up, are they lower than what the, maybe the neighboring properties that aren't caught up?
No. The specials are incredibly complex, because there are four and five specials that were on these lots, depending on street, water, sewer. There was an additional pond improvements that were there, that were...so the specials are incredibly complicated on this, right? And because the developer put specials on for all of that infrastructure improvement, as opposed to doing, funding some of that himself, that you've got these extremely high specials on these lots in the Lawrence Bay subdivision. Again, what's here tonight is the CID for future specials. The deal that was negotiated way back included the developer paying off the outstanding property taxes on that, as well as making a payment for the, of the past due specials. And that $525,000 is currently being held in escrow as we go through all of these steps, CID being one, and then on the 12th, the RHID being the last of those steps so that we can get moving forward.
To me, this is keeps on with my plan of, you know, that I look at it as, if we have no houses on those properties, that's, you know, we're not recouping what we can recoup in taxes. So this, to me, is the best way we can go right now, and to me, this is where we need to go. And unfortunately for everyone to sit there and say, well, this developer does this, or this...we have a lot of developers in town that have vacant properties that are falling apart, that they're not taken care of, that we need to work with all of them to try to get current projects, current buildings that are up, back up to snuff, and then also anything like a Lawrence Bay where we have open lots, and getting those back on, because it's, we have, like I said, we have a lot of developers that have just broken windows and other things falling apart, but we work with them every day, so I...to me, it's kind of disconcerting when names get thrown out on specific people, and it seems more personal than it does, we're making the best decision for the city and for what's going on, because we, like I said, it's an ongoing problem throughout the city. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Braxton, this covers several lots owned by the developer and three lots owned by the city that we acquired through property tax sale, correct?
Correct.
What this specific action tonight does is spread those future specials out. So whoever builds, if the developer builds and the city builds on the three lots, if the developer defaults on his agreement with the city, the city has all of the lots and presumably will affect building on those at some point. This action allows the individuals that ultimately buy those houses to have specials that are reasonable.
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller?
Just to clarify one more time on that whole deal, because it's confusing. The issue is that the developer himself is paying off all the past due specials. And then we're just simply refinancing the ones that would have been twenty years had they started paying them beforehand. They're...so they're going to be refinanced, so they'll be at the twenty-year spread to reduce, to stretch them as if they were new. That's all, right?
Correct. There's approximately ten years left of the future specials. But they're at $300 a month.
Right.
So by reamortizing those over twenty years, it allows for the reduction of that monthly payment to get into a more reasonable $185 a month range for those people that are going to be purchasing these, so that it's not such a burden on them.
And with both then, developer for the past due paid in full, and then the new buyers forward paid in full. Thank you.
Okay. See a motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, with a second by Deputy Mayor Cal. So if there's no further discussion, we're ready to vote.
Okay, you can vote. Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
No.
Okay, we have eight yes, with Councilmember Valdivia Akla voting no, the motion carries.
Okay, move on to non-action items on the agenda. Madam Kirk?
A is discussion concerning the agreement of the governing body with the City of Topeka Land Bank to defer city special assessments to certain property in the land bank until said special assessments are re-amortized by the Community Improvement District.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Braxton Koppeli will lead us through this item.
Thank you. To just sum up what this resolution does, is that the city of, I'm sorry, ordinance, the City of Topeka purchased the three lots at auction, and then the City of Topeka donated those lots and put them into the land bank, and the land bank obviously is wholly owned by the City of Topeka, right? State law allows that we can defer the special assessments, so that we're not having to pay our own special assessments that are out there, and then because we're ultimately responsible for making the debt service payment on the bonds that are being assessed. So what we're doing is basically saying, we're already responsible for paying those bonds. There's no reason that the land bank needs to be paying special assessments to the county that would then be paid back to the City of Topeka. Simple matter of using the provision that was, that's well-designed in the law, to basically provide relief to a municipality that would purchase lots, that would have special assessments, to not be paying ourselves. That's simply what that is. This is on as a discussion item tonight, and not for action. Happy to stand for any questions, and would welcome a motion to go ahead and take action on this and approve it and move it along.
Well, Councilman Dobler?
I don't see any reason to put this off till next week, or I guess, I mean, three weeks from now. I would make a motion to suspend the rules and move this to an action item tonight. I don't know how to do that on my little screen over here, so somebody tell me.
I'll second your motion. And Councilwoman Valdivia Akla?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't be supporting this. I think that this is going to be down to a differing view on what land banks are about. And I think, in my opinion, again, this is gross, that we would be using the land bank for this type of endeavor, or whatever we're calling it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? Repeat your motion, Councilman Dobler?
Motion would be to suspend the rules to add this item to our agenda as an action item.
Councilwoman Hiller?
I just have a question, because it's coming at me fast at this point. Is this only about these three properties, not all properties? Thank you.
Okay.
Can I answer that question?
Yes, Braxton?
Yes, you'll see that we have specifically identified only these three properties, Lot 22, 24, 28, and Block B of Lawrence Bay. This does not apply to any other properties.
Thank you. Okay, the motion is to suspend the rules. So we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Is this the vote on suspending?
Yes.
Oh, no.
Okay, motion carries. We have eight yes with one no. Councilmember Valdivia Akla voting no. Motion carries.
Okay. Councilman Dobler?
I'll then make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, with a second from Councilwoman Ortiz.
Hold on just a second.
I'll wait for you to clear that.
Yep, okay. Okay. This is a motion to approve. Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
No.
Okay, we have eight yes, the motion carries, with Councilmember Valdivia Akla voting no.
Okay. We'll move on now to the second non-action item. Madam Kirk?
Okay, B is discussion related to the City of Topeka 2026 operating budget.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Pleased to present to you this evening FY 2026 proposed budget. Josh McInarney, our Division Director of Planning, oh, I'm sorry, Budget and Finance, will lead us through this item. Thank you.
Kind of like the city manager said, tonight, we're going to do a high-level overview of the general fund and go through some other funds. I just want to say, this is the proposed budget. Obviously, we have until September to approve the budget, so as we get more information or priorities emerge, obviously, the budget is subject to change from staff and council alike, so this is just the first initial kind of kickoff presentation. And then also, too, initial presentation tonight, we have then about a three-week break until we actually get into the department-specific presentations, which will occur in August. We have that revenue-neutral hearing in late August, and then hopefully we'll have some things decided then to where we're looking at a possible action date, which is September 16th. Now, that is the latest scheduled council date. We have until October 1st to submit the budget, but those are just set council dates at this point. So starting with the income statement side, or starting with the revenue side of the income statement, and we're going to go through the big ones tonight, property tax, sales tax, franchise fees, and how those assumptions were made. But the takeaway from this slide in that 2026 budget column is that this budget is assuming a current mill levy rate of 36.956, and then we're also in that miscellaneous, that second to last row, are assuming a general fund spin-down of reserves, our both, our unassigned reserve, and then our just, our general fund reserve. Now, the reason that 25 column is so below that 25 budget column is the, we have to go back to the council for approval to spend out of the unassigned reserve fund, since this year's budget, as we reviewed two weeks ago, was spinning down about $9 million, but we have, again, we have to get that approval from council before we can assume that. Now, getting into those high-level categories, so property taxes, that's given, the assessed valuation rate is given us by Shawnee County, that's formulaic base. Now, not all of the mill levy goes directly into our general fund. Now, not all of the mill levy goes directly into our general fund. Some of that goes into the debt service fund, about 29%, and about one, low, less than 1% goes in our special liability fund. Now, like I said earlier, we have a flat mill levy rate assumed right now, and that's the max we can do based off last week's vote. So given a 96% collection rate, which is what's been pretty typical in past years, we're assuming about $43.6 million in revenue for property taxes now. That does not include any delinquency taxes that may be paid, and that also does not account for the neighborhood revitalization program. If you improve your property by 15% or greater, you get some property taxes rebated on your home. That's not included in the $43.6 million number. Now, also too, you have motor vehicle taxes. That's also given by the county, and that's prorated based off how our mill is distributed. So if 100% of our mill was to go to the general fund, 100% of the motor vehicle taxes are going to the general fund. 50% would be 50%. So that's how those numbers were determined on the second slide. Sales tax. So our 2024 collections was about $39.9 million. So how are we doing this year through four months, or about 2.25% higher this year compared to last year? Now, when we eventually approve the budget, we'll have two months more of sales tax. So obviously, subject to change. If it comes in higher, we can, we can bump it up a little. If it comes in lower, we can adjust. But what we're assuming right now is that 2024 number with a 2.25 compounded collection rate, so getting to us about $41.7 million. Now, if we bump that up from 2.25 to 3.25, that's about $820,000 more. So it's obviously, we're going to adjust it, but it's, that's what the figure would look like if we adjust our assumptions. Franchise fees, what we assume for franchise fees is, we usually get about 5% of the, the net profits from Evergy and Kansas Gas. Now, what we assume for 2026 is just a 2.5% increase, given any rate change. Now, like we reviewed two weeks ago, the first three months of 2025 compared to 2024 were much greater in collections. Now, that's kind of tapered off to where the last three months of this year are flat compared to last year. Pilots and our admin fee, so, and we'll get into this a little bit later, but in lieu of charging some of the surcharges on employee costs in the general fund, we're going to be bumping up what the utilities funds and the parking fund pays towards the general fund. So this, these are expenses on the general fund, or on the enterprise fund, the size of an expense, and they go into the general fund as revenue. That's without any service reduction. Those are just, those are in lieu of charging for other things administratively to where that's, that's some ways we can get more money into the general fund without service reductions. And finally, and we don't talk about this one a lot, we have the liquor tax that comes from the state. This is, this estimate is given to us by the county. So we get, we, we're estimating about $2.2 million to where one-third of that goes directly into our general fund as revenue. And then another third that comes into the general fund as revenue, but then it's expensed on the backside because that has to go to Shawnee County since they run parks and rec. And that's what the, the law specifically outlined for is parks and rec programs. And then finally, the last remaining third goes into a separate fund, was our alcohol and drug and safety fund, which goes into like mitigating drug, drug addiction, abuse, and things of that nature. And just as a review, so we've talked about kind of in the last four months of, we have a built-up debt service fund balance at the end of 2024 of about $18 million. Now, we can't directly transfer any money out of the debt service fund into the general fund. So how do we spend that money down since that is a super-high fund balance? Is what we do is we divert revenue going into it. So if we shift two mills from going from our debt service fund into the general fund, that would give us three more million dollars in property taxes, not in total, but go, overall, but total going into the general fund. And then also, we talked about our fee schedule adjustments. There would be another $200,000, and then going back to that two, two slides ago, in lieu, and raising the pilots and raising the admin fee, there's about another $1.5 million. So without any service reductions and using built-up fund balances, we've raised revenue going into the general fund by a pretty, pretty substantial amount. And then on the flip side of that, by not charging a surcharge to our retirement reserve and our work comp fund, that also have a built, built-up fund balance. Our retirement reserve is around $6 million right now at the end of '24, and our work comp is, I think, around $14 million. But we'll be spending, we'll be spending that down in the general fund because we don't have to charge because we're comfortable with how high those fund balances are. And then, so kind of before we get into expenses, so we started this whole process with a base budget of about $137.5 million. That's with any standard contractual increases, any utility rate projections, just kind of what it takes to operate. And then we had some additions. So as you see on the screen, we had some civilian FTEs added. We have staffing study up there, fire compressors, a Tyler digit ticket system to where we added $1.3 million back in. Now, on the flip side of that, material expenses we reduced. In this budget, we're, as of, right now, we're not assuming any general fund subsidization of the hotels, so those operating transfers, those wouldn't be, we, that's not assuming any operating transfers for 2026. And then also, this budget is, to a total of 41 FTEs, is either removing or reducing 41 FTEs, or freezing, sorry. And then, so if we did all that, without using any built-up reserves, we still have a projected deficit of $7.5 million now. But I want to get into the expense side, what those expenses make up of that $132.9 million. So a lot of it, obviously, in the service organization, a lot of that is personnel to where in the 2026 budget, about $100 million of that $132 is personnel-related. And then we kind of broke it out into other large categories that are of note, so internal service charges. Those are expenses from the general fund that go into our IT facilities and fleet fund as a revenue to fund their, the services they provide. Then we have our property and vehicle insurance charges. We've had to bump that up quite a bit because we've been spending the fund balance down at a quick rate over the last three years to where that, that is a charge that, again, in the general fund, goes into that fund as, as a, the property insurance fund is a revenue to pay off those claims, premiums, of things of that nature. Then we have the Evergy streetlight charges. So we pay for the electric bills on the streetlights that Evergy owns. Now, that was over-budgeted in the past to where that's a pretty safe number for 2026, but we'll monitor that with any rate increase. I don't imagine it going up too much more, but that's, that's a non, kind of nondiscretionary charge that we have. Then we have that, the prisoner charges that we've talked about now, those are coming in pretty close to budget, are a little over-budget this year, but we've raised them to where we think will be covered for 2026. That's, that's an expense we paid to the county. And then, as I alluded to earlier, that pass-through tax that we get in the form of revenue from the state from the liquor tax comes into the general fund as a revenue, but then we have to expense it back out. So that, then we have those other items, capital outlays or vehicle or equipment-related commodities, or just fuel, any, any type of thing, fuel, salt, sand, stuff like that, to where the bulk of our expenses are in that personnel line item and then those, just those standard charges. Now, kind of what the, what's being introduced before the body is, how do we address that gap? So what's being introduced is, we started 2025 in our general fund reserve, just our general fund reserve, about $23 million. But we had a high built-up fund balance from our unassigned reserve. What that unassigned reserve total at the end of 2024 was, was $13.9 million. So we have a total resources of just general reserve of just south of $37 million. Now, what we told the body two weeks ago is, we think we're going to make a draw request out of that unassigned reserve to tune it about $9.45 million to where at the end of 2025, we'll have about $4.5 million remaining in that reserve fund. So if things go according to plan, if things come in as how we think, we'll have a total reserve balance between the two funds of $27.5 million. Now, if the budget was set at what is proposed hypothetically of that $133 amount, our policy is we have to be above 15% minimum reserves. Now, 15% of minimum reserves would leave, we'd have to be above $19,947,000 with our general fund reserve. So, which would let us spend about 3 million, a little over $3 million, just to be above our reserve, so we can spend down $3 million. So if we used above 15% and what's remaining in our unassigned reserve, we could plug, we could plug that, let me go back to it, we could plug that gap for '26 and get through. So we, bottom line is, we have enough resources to be above our policy minimum. Now, that, that picture right there, it kind of encapsulate what we spend our money on. So on the left are expenses, so obviously, most of our personnel in the general fund is in police and fire. So 80, that, that pink or purple bar, $81 million right there, and that is about more than our two largest revenue sources in property tax and sales tax. And then we have our non-public safety personnel, and then we had those, those charges I talked about earlier in the form of insurance charges, internal services, Evergy, Shawnee County charges for the jail, et cetera, to where that's the gap that we have the opportunity to address as we go through the budget. But what's being proposed, like we said earlier, is we're using, we're going to plug that gap for now, being above our 15% minimum fund balance policy, and also using the, utilizing the unassigned reserve. But if we don't want to go that option, or we don't want to use all that amount, we'd have to talk about ways where we can either lower the bar on the left or increase the bar on the right. And then, so kind of, obviously, I talked a lot about the general fund, and we'll get into other funds as well. But we wanted to provide where we ended at in terms of fund balance for '24 for some major funds, and then where we think we're turning for '25 and '26. Now, some funds of note, we've talked about the special highway fund that's funded by the gas tax. We've been spending, we, that's a flat revenue source with the, in an increased expense environment to where we're going to have to probably, we're going to, what's being proposed, and I'll get into this in a sec, is doing a transfer from another fund to plug that for '26, so that way that fund is solvent for 2026. Then we also have the parking fund. Again, that, that fund's being spent down to where in 2027, if we had to make the bond payments, we'll probably be in some trouble there on terms of sustainability of the parking fund. And then we also have our group health insurance fund where we have not raised premiums enough in the last couple of years to match what's going out the door in claims. Now, that's being addressed behind the scenes, but we're also proposing another infusion within that fund to get it, get it sustainable going forward. So other fund considerations, like I just alluded to earlier, what's going to be proposed to the body, and they have, obviously, the body has to vote on this, is doing a $2.2 million infusion from the workers' comp fund. So 641 on the. Already assumed those transfers, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a, they wouldn't go down any farther unless projections were to change. Finally, and then the next $2 million transfer from that retirement reserve fund that had about $6 million in it into the special highway fund, that way, that's a policy issue settled for 2026. Obviously, it's predicated on the governing body's determination, but that way, we would only really have to focus on the general fund for this cycle. Like I said earlier, parking expenses are our pace and revenues. And then something City Manager wanted to note is that due to the legislative post-audit in this budget, we're also adding a chief security officer position and then scanning software to be more secure as a city. And then kind of finally, policy considerations, it's just high-level takeaways is, we do have enough resources for the 2026 budget to be where we're, we're meeting all our minimum fund balance policy requirements that we can get through. But then 2027, if we're using a lot of that one-time expense, or the one-time reserve today, we're eventually going to have to either lower that expense bar, raise that revenue bar, do a combination of either or. Or also, we can transfer money from other funds to get us through to buy us time to, to make those decisions over the long haul. And then some other considerations that we had were, we have our development services revenue that comes into the general fund. We could talk about raising revenue to where we can recoup cost that, if we were to do that, we could, if we recoup, or, or, sorry, what a flat net neutral would be, would be raising revenue about $600,000 to recoup expenses. And then we could talk about a sales tax initiative in the future, or also, we can talk about continuing to draw down from other funds, the work comp fund, the retirement reserve fund, to get us through to the future. So that's a quick presentation on $133 million, or just for the general fund and more, but that's kind of where we stand today. But I think as we get through this process, it's good, giving the governing body this presentation tonight, mull over decisions for the next four weeks, and then ask any questions, and then we can dive into department budget presentations. So the good news is we have some time to decide some things.
Thank you, Josh. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Josh. What really, really helps me is when you can tell me what page we're on, while you're flipping through all of that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have on my screen either, so.
No, that's okay. That's okay. That's what really helps me, so I can refer back to it and so people at home can, yeah.
Gotcha.
Because I'm floating through the book. Thank you.
Questions for Josh? Councilman Dobler?
Just confirming with staff that this is now online for the public also, now that we have a budget tonight. So does, so does the whole world, as it were? Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you.
Everybody can see your work, Josh.
There we go.
He knows it.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Okay. Next on the agenda is a public comment. We have two people signed up today. I saw one of the gentlemen was here, stepped out. I don't know if he's still here or not. John Federico? John Federico? Second person signed up is Henry McClure.
Henry McClure, Topeka, Kansas. Thank you, Your Honor, for your time tonight. And I think it's, all bets are off when it comes to public money, as far as naming names. You should be able to name the names when it comes to public funds and who's stewarding that money and where it's going. Absolutely. It's, it's not about vendettas. It is, it's truly from the councilperson that's zoomed in, she's right. There, there's, there's two Topecas. There's the Topeka up here, and there's the Topeka right here. It was like earlier, I was going to have to spend $1,400 to get a quota request because I wanted to see over the last decade how many emails had gone between Jim Klosman and Braxton. And then, but it wasn't worth the $1,400 because you still got to filter them. And nobody meant, I forgot to mention when I was languishing all that extra time, the $3.2 million spent to fix the lake and the dam, and then specials put on properties that hadn't paid specials in five years. I mean, it's, it's not his fault that he, that it wasn't collected between the county. And, and I think it's irresponsible for doing, backing the bonds again for the full faith and credit. You're just, we're going in a cycle. You know, we're, we're running into a wall, we keep doing the same thing, thinking we're going to get a different result, and that's called insanity. I was very disappointed in the, the note I got from GoToPika. I, I was hoping to see who actually voted on giving Cody Foster and his family and, and who, the partners in that LLC, the $9.5 million. I, I got to know who was at the meeting. I got to know who was at the meeting. But why isn't, why isn't who voted which way public knowledge? It's a shell game here in Topeka. You know, find the P. You know, we're not going to, we're not going to let you know. We're going to take our, Jeto is going to have GoToPica make the decision. The meetings aren't public, and then you can't really even see who did what. It's not fair. This is going to catch up with you. What was really interesting about the hotel, I've got, I've got an offer that I was involved with for, it's right here, for $7.6 million, with a $1.5 million down. And this deal could have been massaged. But we were so, we were treated so rudely by a 500 and, or, yeah, $554,000 consultant. It's just not worth it. You know, there's no draw to Topeka. That's why I'm trying to get this uniformed development agreement through, to where we don't have to come up here and beg you for another cup of gruel. Where the insiders up here, they already got the deal. Come down here, and you get four minutes just to talk because it's already, the deal's already decided. Thanks for the opportunity. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Federico, you're back in the room. That's all right.
Good evening, everyone. John Federico. I reside currently in West Lawrence, although my primary office has been in downtown Topeka for 30 years. I also have real estate investments downtown and am a small business owner. Thank you for the indulgence, Mayor. I felt it was important to just go on record through all her comments related to the recently approved parking fee ordinance for downtown Topeka. I wear many different hats. I'm a lobbyist for 68 different entities, including various local governments. I serve as the chair of let for the Topeka Chamber Board, but I appear before you today as the majority owner and managing partner for the Celtic Fox. And I'm here representing the other investors, Greg Schwert, Berks Pettit, and Jeremiah Nelson. I want to start by going on record in thanking the city manager and the city staff for their professionalism, their transparency, and their courtesy in sitting down with me as an engaged investor in downtown Topeka to review the various parking options. My deep concerns, however, relate directly to your support of the decision to extend the courtesy of free parking for the patrons of businesses located on Kansas Avenue while choosing to charge a fee for the customers who choose to support businesses on the side streets. What does this mean for the Celtic Fox? Using 2024 data, we derive exactly 50% of our business between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. That's 23,315 people walking through our doors as compared to 23,330 people walking through our doors from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. How is it fair that our customers either have to park on Kansas Avenue and walk a greater distance to support our establishment during the day? Or worse, pay for parking on the 100 block, which adds $1 to $2 of cost to dine at our establishment versus that of our friends on Kansas Avenue. I will admit that some walk door establishment during the day, but certainly many do drive and park. I respectfully ask what criteria was used when you chose to treat businesses in downtown differently? When the Celtic Fox has assessed its fee for the Downtown Business Improvement District, you don't differentiate between businesses on Kansas Avenue versus the 100 block as we all fall under the Tier One category. What does this mean for downtown Topeka as a whole? How can this new policy possibly help spur investment in downtown Topeka? I sent someone from our office, who actually volunteered to walk the street from Sixth Avenue to Tenth Street, and then one block east and to the west. Thirty empty storefronts currently in downtown Topeka, making up 32% of vacancies in all available storefronts. In closing, I would like to thank that the Celtic Fox, who has served as an excellent option for Topequans and visitors to Topeka for over 20 years, is exactly who you would want to support and make it easier to operate in downtown, not harder. I, along with my partners, as well as many of our other friends operating entertainment options downtown, share the common goal, certainly not of getting rich, but investing here because we care, because we all share the same vision for downtown. We are all in this together. I believe we should all be afforded the same opportunity to survive in downtown. All I have ever asked is when it comes to setting parking policy, is you treat us all the same. Either we are all downtown Topeka, or we're not. I will end as I started. I appreciate working with Dr. Perez and the city staff, and I urge you, I beg you, to reconsider your actions and find a different solution that treats everyone fairly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. No further persons are signed up for public comment. We'll move to announcements. Madam Doherty?
Okay. So the next governing, so the August 5th governing body meeting is canceled due to primary election. So the next one will be August 12th. And then same with the next Topeka Development Corporation Board meeting will also be held August 12th prior to the council meeting. That's all I got.
City manager?
Nothing for me, sir. Thank you.
Go around the room here. Councilman Duncan?
Two things, Mayor. I did not know Mr. Federico would be here tonight. So I'll put this to staff since we don't meet for almost another month as they look for the budget. I would like us to take a look at what the fiscal impact would be if meters between, along Ninth Street, Eighth Street, Seventh Street, and Sixth Street, between Kansas and Jackson, and Kansas and Quincy, were converted to two-hour parking spaces. I'm not exactly sure what I'm going to do with that information yet, but I know that that would obviously have a fiscal impact if that conversion was made. And I just would like to see what those numbers are. And I can send a follow-up email with that.
I've got it, sir.
Okay. Thank you. The second thing, Mayor, is I don't want to be too repetitive to those of you already sitting in the room, but there's a lot of folks who, two hours ago, saw that we are selling Hotel Topeka. And they didn't watch the first meeting, so they tuned in tonight. It wasn't on the agenda as they're seeing that news. So I'm going to be honest, I'm going to repeat what I said at the board meeting so that all the new viewers who are wondering what's going on have a repeat of what we said and haven't had a chance to hear it. So I'm sorry for those of you sitting here who've already heard it, but I want to repeat it one more time. As everyone has seen tonight, we are in a letter of intent to sell Hotel Topeka. That sale commits and upholds the pledge that I and many on this governing body made when we purchased it from day one, that we would sell it, that we would not spend taxpayers' money to renovate it, and that we would, in fact, make the taxpayers whole. I will say, this is the best offer we got. Yes, there were other offers, but none of those made the taxpayers whole. They not only wanted to pay half or less of what we have invested in it, but also wanted to do things, not all of them, but most, like retain the CIB. This is not that deal. This deal gets expenses out of the general fund, while guaranteeing that all payments are covered with other dollars, and that the taxpayers recoup the funds put into the maintenance while under city ownership. This sale is to a reputable hotelier with an industry portfolio that provides a name brand flag to the hotel, ensures a bright future for the city's only large conference center, which is essential here in the capital city. This keeps current businesses in Topeka. It brings businesses back to the capital city. It supports other hotels, restaurants, and retail establishments, all of who were supportive of us making this initial move to support their businesses here in Topeka. It brings in new sales tax revenue, and it protects the investment made by the county on behalf of taxpayers to the tune of more than $50 million at the Stormont Vale Event Center. I'm confident that the county is going to work out an agreement with this individual and do their part to get Mainer Conference Center back and operational to the same standards. And I look forward to us all moving on from this process and having a very profitable facility that will also bring in additional sales tax revenue that's not even incorporated into the financials that we look at. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Hofer?
I only have one item tonight. I'm going to talk about the next fundraiser for the zoo. Next week, they're going to sponsor a movie at the B&B Theaters. It's called Disney Nature's program called Tigers. It will be on Wednesday night, on the 23rd of July, at 7:00 p.m. The second showing will be on Thursday, 1:00 p.m., which would be a good time to be inside if it's hot as it has been lately. All the money raised is going to go to the new Tiger venue, Tiger Trails and Den Academy. I hope that it's a movie, they say, that is good for children five and over. And it'd be great if everyone could get out and support this. And there'll be raffles with some really nice prizes. And they're even going to have animals they're going to bring from the zoo for the kids to see. I don't remember, I believe, there was a snake and a couple of other. They're just different animals, and you'll get a chance to get up close and personal to the animals they bring. So thank you.
Councilwoman Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. Three short things. One, John, it was good to have you here this evening. And the conversations I've been involved in subsequent to us passing the parking piece, the net for fairness, as well as accommodating our future growth that we all want, is to look again at figuring out some way to do the first two hours free in the garages so that we can get people off the, incentivize people to be off the avenue and accommodate everyone. So I'll just put that out there. I wanted to second my colleague, Councilwoman Ortiz's request that whenever we do the budget items, we do use the budget books and reference the pages. Slows it down a little bit so that we all can follow it, but lets us take notes and so on. So I second that request. And last, we had a couple of public projects that came through really quickly this evening. It sounds like they were very simple and so easy for us to understand and go ahead and pass with about three hours' notice of exactly what they were. But I just want to remind that our council rules say that the, for the most part, unless there's an exception, that any attachments that go with an item are supposed to be attached to it when the preliminary budget comes out two weeks before. And that really is of value so that people can study up on it or read or ask questions if it's something they're interested in, so that we really are as prepared as possible when we come to a vote. So we've been cutting some corners on that for various reasons, but I would like to encourage that we lean on getting it right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdiviacola?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind folks that the Arleta Guadalupe Church is celebrating the 92nd year of the annual Fiesta Mexicana. I'll always refer to it as Fiesta Mexicana. And it starts today, goes through Saturday. Tuesday through Thursday, it's 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And then I think Friday and Saturday is 4:00 p.m. to midnight. This is more than a historic and one of the most long-running festivals in the state. It is a testament to the Mexican and the Mexican-American culture in Topeka, which has always been vibrant, inviting, and inviting to the community that may not know about the beauty of our culture and Arleta Guadalupe Church. I would encourage people that go to the fiesta that have not been before that I think the church is open. If not, you know, you'll know when you try to get in the front doors. But we have a mosaic there that was created in 1962. It's probably one of the largest and most beautiful mosaics in the United States. It was done by artisans from Mexico that brought the tiny mosaic pieces, you know, along with them. It is a true work of art. But I think that we also have to understand that when we come in and learn the stories of the Mexican and Mexican-American people, that Arleta Guadalupe is more than a church. It's more than a mosaic. She has actually been named by Pope John Paul as the patroness of the Americas. She is considered a guiding light, a guiding force, a force of love and community and resistance. And so I just think that there is such beauty to our culture that I hope people will come that have never attended before and come with a welcoming attitude because it's how the fiesta comes to you, is with a welcoming attitude. And thank you to the Fiesta Committee for all the hard work that they do, and hope to see you at Fiesta Mexicana. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Well, I was just going to say it's Fiesta time, but that was good history there, Christina. Appreciate that. I'm just interested in good food, good fun, and maybe a beer or two. Anyway, I did want to recognize the Fiesta this week. It is a lot of fun if you want to come down. They have free parking from the Madison Apartments. The shuttle runs every 30 minutes, so you could park there, and it takes you right in the heart of it. I also wanted to announce that there's a golf tournament this Friday, and they are raffling off a golf cart. And so that's new this year, and I think it's pretty awesome. We had some sponsors that had to pull out, and so they're just trying to do something different. So if you golf and you want to get a hold of me, I will give you that little Q code or whatever, and you can get on there. Tickets are three for $50, and it's refurbished. It's pretty nice. I did have a chance to spin it around, and it goes 22 miles per hour. I think I could have got it faster, but they were afraid I was going to wreck it, so they wouldn't let me do that. But it is a lot of fun. I wanted to congratulate my cousin that was on the news last night, and they told the history of how they came. They live right across, Tevelo, that lives right across from your mother's house. And we just pour a lot of love into it and a lot of hard work. And now they've got their grandkids and their grandkids. So she'd be happy to have you. It's right on the corner, what's that, Green? Green?
Greeny.
Greeny?
And Chandler.
And Chandler. And you're going to hear a lot of music and a lot of craziness over there. And that's just how they like it, and they'll be there all week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bates?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we were talking in public comment earlier, and we were talking about numbers for those specials, I'm still a little bit perplexed on how there's such a differential between the numbers that we got from Braxton and the numbers we got here. So I would certainly like to sit down with Braxton and see why there's such a gap there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, the last two weeks, having out of town. Two weeks ago, I zoomed in. Last week, I wasn't available. But it's because I was with what I call my second family. It's the U.S. Military War Dogs baseball team. It's an active-duty and veteran baseball team. We travel the country every summer and play collegiate summer league teams and first responder teams. And it's an absolute joy to be a part of that organization. Their mission is to support our military, get back to our veterans, and honor our fallen. And we try to do that every single game and anywhere we go. El Dorado is a town that we've spent a lot of time in the last couple of years and worked on projects down there. This year, the team that was down there worked on the community center and putting up all the veterans' pictures in their community center, and it looked amazing. The only thing higher than my approval rating is my ERA this year because I got hit around hard. I don't think I'm allowed in El Dorado anymore after I hit four batters in three innings. So as someone that's almost 46 years old, it's a joy in life to be able to still get out there and play a game I love, be around active-duty and veterans, which, you know, I'm a veteran myself, so it's an absolute joy. Since we're skipping meetings, I want to say happy birthday to my wife. She'll, her birthday is the third, and our anniversary is the ninth. We've been married 22 years. We've been married 22 years, and that woman puts up a lot for me, especially, you know, with my war dog friends. It almost gave her a nervous breakdown hanging around them this week. But she's in Minnesota right now with our daughter. She's had ankle surgery again today, and she does a lot for our family, does a lot for me, supports me greatly, even though she's not very political herself. But she's also the person that holds me accountable most at this job because there are several times I've gone from here to home and getting yelled at for what I said or did because she didn't agree with it or didn't think I took a hard enough stand on something. So I just want to say a happy birthday and happy anniversary. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dillon.
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. I don't have anything. Councilwoman Valdiviacula probably said it all with regards to the Fiesta. I would encourage you to try and get down there, maybe pick the evening hours when it's not so, not so hot. And if you have the chance to go, look at the art exhibit that they have in the Mono Cuevas Landrin Activity Center. I think you'll be impressed with the variety and the skill level of the artists that are represented, primarily from Topeka, but they're from other cities who are, have relatives here in Topeka and just, they just want to participate. So go down, have some fun, some food, and some fellowship. I think you'll enjoy yourself. To everyone this evening, I appreciate your indulgence with our comments and our discussion, and I hope you have a great week. So with no further business, there's no executive session before us, no further business coming for this body. The meeting is adjourned.